Be a city whose builder and maker is God, as the citizens thereof are God that we may move forward and not back, let's go up and not down. We pray this prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please follow the pledge of most life.
That we believe in the truth and the light of the United States of America, and do the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Lord and our Saviour, our blessed lead is to be in the presence of our State under God, unindivisible.
Thank you Pastor Gossi, thank you Councilman Decker. We have no proclamations this evening, so we'll go to item five, announcements and presentations. One of the swearing in of our new police officers. Chief Riles wants to say his prayers. You want it, Chief?
Before we get there, I'd like to introduce your latest promoted captain, Oscar Stoker. Oscar Stoker has 24 total years of law enforcement. He started his career at Dickinson in 1996 as a patrolman. Two years later, he went to Texas City PD. Several years after that, I went to lunch with him and asked him if he would come back to Dickinson. We need him badly, by our school district. Took about $8,000, spent paper, came back. In 2011, he was promoted to sergeant. He has presently enrolled at University of San, State University of San Houston Leadership Command College. If you know Captain Stoker, you know he's one that doesn't just talk that talk when he walks that walk. He shares my vision. Please welcome Captain Stoker. Next, these officers will come up. Call your name, officer. Oscar Gonzalez is a Dickinson native. She graduated from Dickinson High School and has lived in Dickinson most of her life. She is a graduate of College of the Mainland Police Academy, came to work in Dickinson, Dickson Police Department in November of 2018. She is currently in field training program and is scheduled to complete the program in April. On completion, she will be assigned to the patrol division. She is married to her husband, Dario, Daro, and they have three, a three-year-old son together, Javier, many now, all of them awesome kids. She loves spending time with her family during her time off. She says she wants to keep the options open for all the different divisions in Dickinson Police Department. Oscar Gonzalez, stay up here. This next guy, his family's been around Dickinson since Dickinson started, Officer Clint Brown. He is also a native of Dickinson, graduated from Dickinson High School in 2011 and has lived here all this life. Clint is married to his wife, Brooke, and they have a two-year-old, Grayson. Clint came to work at Dickinson Police Department in December 2013 as a jailer. In February 2015, he transferred to Communications. Clint attended the Police Academy Tom at night while working full-time dispatch during the day. Graduated from College of the Mainland Academy in November 2018 and will be transferred to the patrol division in the coming weeks. His hobbies are working on vehicles tinkering. Since those, be a supervisor in the Dickinson Police Department. He is also one of our two different academy graduates. Next officer is Officer Lisa Chandler. She graduated from Missoria High School in 2004 and from Missoria College Police Academy in 2011. She worked for Cleveland Police Department as a reserve officer in 2012, as a full-time patrol officer with Preport Police Department from 2012 to 2018. In her time with Preport, she has attended many certificates as an intermediate police officer, hostage negotiator, basic police instructor, and field training officer, which we just really need to. Lisa came to Dickinson Police Department in November 2018. She is currently in field training program now and is scheduled to complete this training in April. After completion, she will be assigned to the patrol division. She has a 10-year-old daughter, Carolyn, and her husband, Cody, is a firefighter for the Preport Fire Department. Lisa loves spending time with her family and drawing as part of one of Lisa's goals is to do grant writing for Dickinson Police Department. So please join me in welcoming our newest police officer.
In the name of the authority of the state of Texas, I state that I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Peace Officer of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you guys, welcome.
Aw, come on!
Thank you guys for coming, thanks for supporting your officers. We'll go with council comments and we'll start with Councilman Sutterman, you ready?
Sure, thank you ma'am. And congratulations to our new officers, even though they've already left, but, and thank y'all all for coming, the ones that are going to stay. I guess the only thing I can say about festival lights is if you've got any pontoons, bring them out to the park Saturday because we're having problems getting out of the mud and water in some spots, but we'll make it. Fish fry for the KCs will be February 1st on Friday, and the next one will be March 1st, and then it'll be for the next seven Fridays after that through March and April because Easter's so late this year. And I think that's about all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thank you ma'am. Thank you everybody for coming tonight, the people that are left, thank you. They'll kind of abandon all this thing, I just say. To start with, I'd like to talk about the de-snagging cleanup that's going on. I have seen probably a few dozen barges go past my house loaded up with limbs and branches. Unfortunately, with the north wind, I haven't even been able to put my boat in the water because it would be sick in the mud. But Zach Weeks, I want to thank you for, he got his boat in the water, took some pictures and posted them online. For what I could see of his pictures, it looks like they're making fantastic progress. It looks wonderful up in that area they've worked on so far. We've got two officers that are going to be retiring very soon, Jimmy Johnson and Steve Crone. They're having a, I guess you'd call it a going away party, congratulations party, good luck party, whatever you want to call it. Old geezer party, as he said. Thursday night at the VFW. I think it's open to everybody. Those two gentlemen have been in the city for years and they've represented us fantastic. We definitely want to give them a good send-off, open to the public. I'd love to see everybody show up and say thank you to those guys. Dave Popoff sent out an email the other day, and let's see if I can pull it up here, where he has set up Chef's Table Charity for the United States Coast Guard and other federal employees that are affected by the federal shutdown. I'm trying to tell you, you can send information to chefstablecharities@gmail.com. They're setting up at Ziegler's and they're taking donations, understand, gas cards, pharmacy cards, grocery cards, non-perishable food items, cleaning supplies, toiletries, baby stuff, and net food. If you could share with all your friends and neighbors, I think it's a fantastic thing that Dave has set up and I think it's, you know, the government is what it is, we won't get into the politics of that, but bottom line, we should always look out for our neighbors. So if you guys can help anybody out, it's with the Coast Guard or anybody that's affected, it's greatly appreciated. Again, you can probably go down to Ziegler's and that's where you can touch base with everybody. Other than that, just to echo what Councilman Sutterman said, fantastic seeing our three new officers. One of them I've known for quite a few years, I'm very, very glad to see him finally get up and get to be a patrolman. That's about all I have. Thank you all very much for coming tonight. Hopefully it won't be that interesting.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson.
I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight, too. Also, you probably should have told the people that Crone's graduating, I mean, excuse me, retirement starts at 6:30, I think, to 10:30. They might need to know when they should show up. Also, I wish Tony Valdez was still here because, you know, Tony's got to feel like a proud daddy that one of his persons from his assistant police academy is now a full-time officer. That's got to make you kind of proud. Anyway, also, I think it's been, it's been a while. I was going to tell you all that I would be giving you an update on the shelter, I mean, the new animal shelter. Well, I can actually get some updates now. We actually, Chris, the city manager and I have been meeting with the shelter contractors every Tuesday morning at nine o'clock, and we are making progress over there. We have our Bell Foundation's in, they are digging the plumbing this week. They told us some dates of when this plumbing and all digging might be done. Of course, I don't stick to the dates that people give me because when they don't hit that date, then you make, you know, people may say, well, I thought you said it'd be done by then. Anyway, it is underway. Hopefully, we have some target dates of having the building set up and ready to go in and do the finishing, and I think it was April, I believe that was the date they gave us. And then hopefully a finish on the inside of the building by June, July. And I know some people are saying, okay, with everything going on, why are we filming the shelter? Well, the shelter was actually started before Harvey and still, we still have to have the shelter done. I mean, those poor animals can't, they can't defend themselves. Anyway, if you've ever been to the shelter, you know, you should go out there and see what the conditions are. And also, if anybody happens to have any spare change or money laying around, the shelter is still taking donations for the building. We are trying to build this facility as much as we can with donations. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Deeds?
Thanks ma'am. I saw a couple of items. In case you didn't notice, there's two items on this agenda very important for this year. We're going to call for an election on May 4th for three council positions and also the renewal, which has to be renewed, I believe it's every four years, of course, at sales day, which we've dedicated to streets. And I'd also like to announce that I have turned in the paperwork last week to file for reelection. Last five years on council, been very productive. I look forward to another three-year term. We have a lot to do with hurricane recovery, hitting our drainage and street programs and high gear. That's all I have there.
Thank you. Councilman Decker?
Thank you. Welcome to those who have not been here. The de-snagging of the ditches and the de-silting is going on. The barges are coming out of the vial. I'll be the very first person when they will de-silt the vial. There's so much silt. And if you notice, when the tide's lower, the wind's out of the north, you've got so much staying, especially over there at the Go-Kart track on 45. It's unbelievable how much silt has come into this vial. From my knowledge, it's never been dredged since I've been here in 78. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman King.
Mayor, council, city administrator, city attorney, city secretary, all city staff, certainly appreciate your service for the city of Dickinson to all of our citizens who are present, we're so deeply welcome, your presence on tonight as well. I want to give my condolences to the Roan family, Mr. James Roan, a long, long, long time resident of our community. He was better known as Mr. Gator. He didn't miss a Dickinson Gator practice, nor did he miss a Dickinson Gator football game. He was 90-plus years of age, passed away on Monday, Memorial of the King Day, and I certainly therefore wish and hope everyone had a wonderful Memorial of the King Day. It was a day of service, their reflection, remembrance of a great civil rights icon who helped to turn the tide for this nation in moving in a good and great direction. And so, we give honor to him and to the memory of his lovely wife who fought hard to make his day a national holiday. And we had an opportunity to take Mr. Virgil Smith, one of the residents of Pine Forest at the time Hurricane Harvey landed in Dickinson, who helped to rescue 17 family members in the Pine Forest apartment using his air mattress in well over 10 feet of water. So we drove to Houston on Monday, the mayor called us about that and connected with his mom and worked out the logistics, and he was part of the Memorial of the King Day parade in Houston. And so I had to call Mr. Laurie over at Gay Family Auto and say, hey man, I have your truck in a parade, and certainly you need to know that Gay Family Auto and GOC Trucks will get some focus on it. And we did. Several individuals were part of the parade around the vehicle, made multiple comments about the vehicle. So that was a great experience for that young man and what he's done to help. He's a very shy young man, and we certainly salute him on tonight as well as giving those condolences. This past Friday, we attended the Houston Galveston Area Council Annual Meeting in Houston. It was a great annual meeting, I'll share a little bit more in my comments on the agenda. This coming Friday, January the 15th, and I see Ms. Harriet look in the audience, we'll be celebrating the Quasar banquet. Dickinson does have a table, and that will be at the South Shore Harbor facility this coming Friday night. It was a great job to the mayor and the city administrator, those who participated in organizing the Harvey Recovery GLO application process. Here at city council, I think well over 30 applications were completed as a result of that particular effort. Each and every one makes a significant difference toward the progression of re-establishing themselves in the city of Dickinson. We want to see that happen, certainly. We want to thank Ms. Russell for coming to our HGC meetings monthly. She is there. I'm not always able to see her from where I sit at the board, but we always connect before we leave. And I just, I think that means an awful lot to see our city finest officer in attendance at the HGC board meeting. It go by the EDC meeting, I think we were in the executive session when I arrived, and I heard some great things came out of it. The mayor will probably be updating us on that. Certainly, congratulations to Captain Stoker, as well as our three new officers. And as one of our council members has already articulated, I've seen Mr. Brown grow as a young boy in school and just to see how he matriculated through the process of employment opportunities and the Dickinson Police Department speaks volumes, one to the leadership of the department as well as to the city, and then speaks volumes to the character of Mr. Brown. And I just see great things in his future as a result of the kind of attitude he has about being willing to move. We welcome the, to the female officers as well, it's always good to see diversity and employment opportunities, and certainly we appreciate what the leadership of the Dickinson Police Department has done. Congratulations again to our two retirees, great individuals, stellar individuals, class act individuals. Can't say enough about Captain Crone and how he's labored over the years for our department, for our city, and his family, and what they have meant to the city of Dickinson. And so we certainly appreciate, we appreciate that, and we look forward to being at the party. On Thursday night, I'll be having water on the rocks.
What'd you say?
Water on the rocks.
I thought it was a new exercise.
Ma'am, could I also extend condolences to the Topher family for the loss of Bob Topher. Been in the community a long time, raised a bunch of kids here and a bunch of grandkids. They'd be sorely missed.
Absolutely.
Thank Mary Dunbar for coming to the Dickinson Minister Alliance meeting early on a Saturday morning and sharing about Dickinson Historical Society and the great effort she's doing for African-American history in the city of Dickinson. Hats off to Mary Dunbar.
Thank you. And I also want to reiterate on the GLO, and if anyone you know who needs, still needs assistance from Harvey, they are out at the depot on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So if you know any of your neighbors that are still trying to recover, please send them out there to get some help. Well, they're 8:30 to 5:30?
Nine.
Nine to five, they're out at the depot. Okay, item six, reports, update on the activities of Houston Galveston Area Council. Councilman King?
Thank you, that was pretty quick. The Houston Galveston Area Council meeting, and I have to report on two different meetings. One is December the 11th, meeting 2018, and the other is the January the 15th, meeting 2019. All local meetings were at 10 o'clock. The committee meeting that I serve on, the Committee for Intergovernmental Relations, met at 9:30 in those particular meetings. Houston Galveston Area Council comprises 13 counties in our region, includes 177 cities, 84 independent school districts, 240 membership team, 36 members on the board. It is a rapidly growing body that serves the citizens of those particular areas and pass-through funds as well as the different other programs. They focus on community businesses, economic development, disaster recovery, planning tools, and the buyback board is just going, growing out the roof as far as the funding that it is providing services to cities to be able to purchase at a lower rate and be able to create revenue at the same time for HGC. So I'll pass the program down for the annual meeting that took place last Friday, we already made a comment about that. And also, we have several save the dates cards, you can grab one if you so like, or the agendas. The significant issue I'd like to bring forward is that the December meeting was nothing really major, significant, other than the importance of the work program. If the city is interested in that type of program. Ms. Susan Dixon, she was the principal industry liaison for helping veterans or those who are coming home from the war and in need of employment to be a part of the apprenticeship program for employment purposes. Some of you may have seen the special on Channel 13 that was run to help one of the veterans to get a trade in construction, went on to get a certification, went on to move from making $19 an hour to well over $40 an hour through this particular program. And so, I thought it was a great program, no cap on the number of employees. They also help the adults and disabled veterans, 18 years or older. And so, even those individuals who are in foster care and are homeless, it helps them to get back to safety through finding a place to work. That was a significant thing that we talked about, as well as the program on the aging, the elderly and the aging, and that was a significant thing to bring forward in that. The GLO representative, Mr. Jonah Chan, we've probably met him here at council, met him in the community. He was promoted to be the director now of the disaster recovery effort, and Mrs. Washington is assuming the post position that he once had. And so, we appreciate what Mr. Jonah Chan has accomplished during the time period he was here. They did inform me about the reimbursement program, mayor and council, that initially was scheduled to start back in December, they pushed it back to January, and it's been pushed back again now to mid-February. The criteria is still the same, the $50,000 ceiling of reimbursement is still the same, but the citizens just need to maintain awareness and consciousness of the GLO website that provides the information on the vendor that will be managing the reimbursement process for those citizens who would need. Again, as the mayor has already indicated, if you need assistance, please don't hesitate to visit one of the two sites that is in our area. Did also talk to, about the cameras for illegal dumping, and we've had some dumping in Dickinson, and we appreciate the work that the citizens are doing in helping to remove debris and tires and things of that nature. And so, if those cameras are needed, we can certainly check them out and provide that particular service to catch individuals who are dumping illegally. They had a great presentation about the awards for parks, over 180 projects since 2006, and the six other parks will be recognized as coming up on February the 8th. We have some great parks here in the Dickinson community and may be able to be assisted with additional grant funding through the Parks and Parks presentation. And legislative session is this year. They are working to make sure our cities and counties are represented to hopefully get some relief from the state. The state sometimes can be pretty difficult with Mr. Bonham now as a, as the speaker. They're hoping to have some communication to, on the favorable side, since we have a state representative and his family member that's also on the board. They had meetings with him two weeks ago, and hopefully that can work out well. Judge Henry is now replacing Ken Clark on the board of HGC, and that was, that was a different site, and we'll talk about that later, but that's, that was certainly a different scene. That's all I have there.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilman King? That'll be the city administrator's report, Chris Heard.
Good evening. So, well, yeah, so I will, we'll start with, I have provided you guys a written report, and this is sort of a first draft of sort of an item that I hope to have in the packet at least once a month. But it kind of is broken down into some upcoming events. Some upcoming events, some departmental news, and then it followed up with project updates. And one of the things I was kind of leaning in and talked to Mr. Sutterman about was Bayou Animal Service Shelter project update was pretty much covered. It's up and running, but there's some more specific details. The water base debris removed along the Dickinson Bayou was covered and up again. We'll provide some details in there. It is interesting to, with 11 loads taking 400, in four days, 411 yards, cubic yards of debris out of the bayou, so I think that's good, and the project will go until March 31st. So, then de-silting and ditches, I think you guys have seen some mobilization there on Leverage Lane, they're going to work west to east, so I think they're going to do the Evergreen Row area and then move to Pabs, and then they're going to do some in the city center, and then they're going to head over to the Nickelstone and a little bit in Moore's addition. So that, and that is kind of going to be ongoing through first quarter. So, the other item that wasn't, we are continuing to work through the 50 streets that sort of were deemed damage in Harvey. We are on, having We are on, having ongoing discussions with FEMA. They have requested some additional information, uh, for specific proof of damage during Harvey. So we are working with our engineers to provide that information so that we can get, uh, true determination of eligibility and participation of the, uh, public assistance program.
Are they working through the shutdown?
Uh, they are, a bit, yes. So we've seen, yes, they, yes, they are.
Uh, that helps, uh, on negotiations with FEMA?
No, they, they've requested additional data and, um, at our last, uh, meeting, uh, IDS basically took the lead in doing, taking some of the photographs that they had based on making some of the determinations where they are questioning whether the streets are eligible. And so we're essentially going to counter that in particular streets and so, uh, we're going, he's compiling that report and then I think me and the interim public works director, which I'll get to in a second, is we'll meet with, uh, them on Thursday to sort of hammer out how we really want to approach our rebuttal to, to FEMA. So, uh, the, excuse me. So that's where we're at that. The other thing I was going to articulate was that we did have thirty-four applications for the application fair, uh, which that, they had several throughout the region and, um, ours by, by far was the most attended. They were talking as the other fairs, uh, were getting five and six applications to give you, um, a kind of an, an idea of how large the thirty-four applications. We didn't actually leave here till almost nine-thirty at night. So it was, uh, highly successful. So, um, then kind of to, uh, finish my report, I wanted to, we've done a little bit of hiring and some contracting, so I want to introduce some, uh, new, uh, or interim employees that we have at this point. So, uh, I will start with first with Julianne Lane and she'll stand, she is our new library director. So welcome her to, uh, the city. Uh, next, um, is, uh, Ron Sullivan. He is our interim, uh, public works director. So if you see his face around, uh, he's kind of hit the ground running and was in our, second day on the job was in our meeting talking about how to deal with streets and drainage. So, uh, I'm very appreciative of him. Allison Benton, she hails from the Fort Worth area and, uh, she is serving in interim capacity for the, uh, EDC. And so we've sort of tasked her to, uh, do a couple of things. One, really get the market, uh, uh, project back on track and it really making sure that the, there's strong consensus with how we want to proceed with that project, along with looking at some of the, uh, how the four B corporation and the city should operate as a, as two, uh, entities. So, and then, uh, Ray Stutzman cannot be here tonight, but, uh, he is our new facility, uh, manager. I think if you've noticed the mold gone, uh, as you walked in tonight, that is sort of one of the little things that he's been able, and he's been highly participatory in the, uh, uh, meetings with, uh, the Animal Body Services Shelter. So I think that is, uh, I think he's already kind of, uh, made an impact in some of the little things that he's willing to do. And, uh, he actually helped, uh, with Stephanie's leadership, uh, to get the fire station sort of, uh, back in service, which, uh, they moved over today, so that's a, a positive. So, and the last, uh, is...
What was the last one?
Stutzman. S-U-T-Z-M-A-N. And I'll, I'll get him at the next, here at the next meeting so you guys can, so you can meet him. So, and then last, uh, we, uh, you know, Gabby had left us and I was sort of, uh, looking at what am I going to do to replace that, fill that void? And, uh, lo and behold, an application came from, uh, the city manager in Friendswood that said, hey, there's a, a person here that's looking to maybe hit the ground running in, uh, city management. So, uh, Stephanie and I interviewed him, interviewed well, and so I want to introduce you to Tori Davidson and, uh, he will be in my office and working, uh, with me, the mayor and Stephanie to sort of, uh, kind of get, keep track of all the activity that's going to be happening over the next, uh, six months to here to make sure that everything stays on task and, you know, progressing.
Good luck.
So he's done a pretty good job so far. So, um, so with that, that's, uh, uh, we are, I am very excited. I do believe, uh, with those additions, we are going to be able to, uh, tackle some of the concerns as we, uh, move forward. I know at the next, uh, uh, meeting and, and some of the, my next reports will really start talking about, uh, the, um, uh, community block grant funding, where it's at, what we're going to be looking at related to that. And then it's my intent to take this project update list and just kind of keep it going. So if there's something on here that you want to be updated on, let me know, uh, and if there's some, uh, changes or suggestions, if you want to, uh, for, uh, volume two, if you would, uh, just let me know, I'd be more happy to make those adjustments.
I want to just welcome, welcome our heroes. We're going to get the best of the...
So how, how's the new, uh, employees, uh, are any of them, uh, actual city employees or are they all interim contract?
No, so, uh, Julianne is, yes. Uh, Tori is, Tori is, and Ray is, which isn't here this evening. I'll bring him at the next meeting. So, so the only two, uh, interims are, are two problem childs.
Allison and Ron.
Allison and Ron, so, um, and they did, I, as the story goes, I literally took Ron over to Public Works without a vehicle so that he couldn't drive away. And he found himself back at City Hall, so I was like, good, he knows how to solve a problem, so that's a good thing.
I think all you guys, uh, I think you probably know well enough already yourselves, you know, we, we've had our challenges and there's a lot of opportunities in front of us and having the right people in the right places is going to make everything fit together and get a flow and get our rhythm back to making the progress we're expecting. Really appreciate having all five of you here.
I've got one question.
Councilor Schindman?
Um, in the report here, is the fire station back to a hundred percent now?
Yeah, as I, as I, well, so, uh, I, I, I put in my report and I talked to both Stephanie and Ray, um, the information that I have is that all the repairs are complete. We did get a limited mold certificate, so that means, I mean, I think that's the class that says you are mold-free and they said it was actually better than they would have anticipated. And then, um, and I know the EMS started moving back into the facility. So I have not touched base with the fire department because I know they had sent a letter to us, um, so I don't know if the, the mold certificate that we will be getting has, will meet their, um, obligation. I have not talked to them, so I left it to that, but it, I am of the impression that it is, uh, it is completed to a point where it can become operational. Now, do I think there's still things that need to be done over there? Yes. And do I think that...
You'll know, you'll know that tomorrow, right?
Sure. With, with the fire department?
No, I mean, you'll know everything that you don't know tonight, you'll know that tomorrow. It's just a matter of finding the people that know.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean...
Could you find that out and, and send us an email?
Yes.
I can get any of the, of the staffs on that. Eric?
Yes, Councilor Wilson?
I can tell you that I, I had, uh, I was at the, uh, pension meeting today with, uh, the fire department president and, uh, chief, they were all, they were both there and they're fully aware of where everything is with the fire department now. They didn't have anything negative to say. Uh, and I, I do believe that, uh, that everybody's moved back over there that was at City Hall. Uh, I did say that, I do know that Doug Spalding hadn't moved yet because he was working on some stuff to, uh, for this meeting today at noon and the computers went down about the time he stopped printout, so he was ready to move back over there. So I believe, to answer your question, Councilor Dietz, I believe they're, they're satisfied with everything that was done and they're ready to move forward.
Well, I heard some doubt over the one-hundred percent comment.
Well, the one-hundred percent...
And I prefer that we get something from the city administrator that says, yes, everything's one-hundred percent complete, back to normal, all repairs are done. We haven't seen the cost, um, you know, what it ended up costing us or any of that either.
Right. But I was saying, you, your, part of your question was about the fire, about the fire department and I actually had a conversation with them today, so...
Well, and to clarify that, in terms of the problem, I think all that stuff's been addressed. I just, I know there's going to be ongoing things that we will need. So, an example, I mean, so...
But what I, what I just heard you say was, I think, could you find out for sure? Let's know.
Yeah, so I do, okay.
We don't even, you know, need to dwell on it.
I, like, on the AC units, I know two of them been replaced, we still have another one that needs to be replaced, so, um, yeah, so...
Mayor, I'm...
Councilor Anderson?
Trying to make sure I don't cut anybody off. Chris, this, this is a, uh, good report. This is information that we've been asking you for and getting sporadically as we specifically ask. We've been asking for a complete report for a while and so this is what this is and it's good and I like it. Um, almost everything on here, I feel like is information that I want to know and information that everybody out there wants to know too. Is this, is there any plans on your part to create a blog on the website or wherever where you can put literally your, your updates to this?
Yes. So, so it's in sort of in blog form is how it's set up here. And so it's my intent to put, to put this, uh, distribute this in three spots. One, on our Facebook page, two, on our website, and then three, as our ongoing relationship to, uh, I45now, I intend to, um, put it, uh, up there as sort of the sort of newsletter for, uh, the city of Dickinson and sort of everything that's happening. And so that's why I talk about if there's additional information that we want to include that I may not, you know, that you guys may find important, please let me know and so that future volumes. And then my intent is to sort of have it as a, especially on the project updates, is essentially that project will, you'll get a report on that every time until it's done. I mean, you'll, you'll get an update on it every time and it will not come off that project update list until it's done. So once it starts and then, so, an example is, uh, this week or next week, I'm meeting with, uh, a county related to California. And so once I sort of get completely briefed up on where we are and sort of the design and what processes we need because that's bonding, but that's a street that is a major thoroughfare in our community, um, I will put that on the update list and I will then keep track as things change on that, um, on that project so that you can kind of keep, so that we can keep track of all the things that are going on. So, so I see that project list growing as activities increase.
Is there, I didn't see a project list in here.
Project update.
Project update.
Okay, of course, we just got it, so I don't have to...
No, yeah, so, and I, and it was, my idea was to introduce it here and in, in the future it will be...
But I guess, I guess, you know, we've, we've, uh, approved a path forward on, uh, on, uh, ditch, uh, desilting and we approved a path forward on streets. The, there's a, there's a map on the ditches, which our contractor has started on that, but we don't have, uh, it's kind of a science project to go, you know, if somebody in the public asks us, you know, what streets are, are on that, uh, program, to, uh, map, for one thing, the map's not on the website, so it, you know, it needs to be there. But since we have identified and approved that path forward, why can't we just get a list of the streets that are going to be done, um, in sequential order so that they have even more information?
Yeah, so that, so that's where it gets...
One of the things we've run into is that there's some streets that are going to be done that aren't on the map.
Right. So that's, so that's where it does, so that's where it gets difficult. And quite frankly, um, the, so we have not got full determination from FEMA related to, uh, financial approval for desilting. So the contract that, um, the Simmons Group entered into, a portion of that was, uh, FEMA-funded projects and a portion of it was locally funded projects. So what we have done is we have started on the local funded projects, but in terms of, but it was nine miles of FEMA and six miles of, um, local with the nine miles even about equaling about three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars of, of cost. So if in fact the FEMA funding doesn't come to fruition, then I'm going to need to come back to you guys and say, okay, we don't have this money, so do we want to prioritize how we invest the local dollars? So what I am trying to do, and this is a very delicate, uh, dance, is I'm trying to identify local investment where we can put money, which can't be something that has been identified as a federal investment, right? But the federal investment hasn't been guaranteed at this point, so I can't go spend local dollars over there. So what I have, what we are doing, and I've realized it's very frustrating, but what we, it's frustrating for all of us, but what we are doing is we're saying, here's our federal priority, here's our local priority. But if our federal priority doesn't come to fruition, then how do we want to adjust the federal priority? And we can't wait completely to get an answer from the federal government before we do anything. So that's our challenge. But then if we spend the money, it's still a ninety-ten match on our side and when you look at the twenty, uh, the fifty streets, thirteen miles, it's twenty-five million dollars. At ninety-ten is still a big number for us. And so I know they're not going to give us twenty-five million, right? But I don't know what they're going to give us and it's all going to be based on our ability to directly relate it to Harvey damage. And so I, if, if, so whatever this council wants me to do, I can say, here's, I can do just what I just did. Here's the federal, here's the local, and here's what we hope to get done. But I don't want to set the expectation, expectation that this is what's going to get done because I can't give that assurance and I don't want you guys to have a false pretense that that assurance is going to be there because it's all because we have limited cash and we can't spend the money twice and we can't wait for federal, um, we, we can't wait to get an answer out of the federal government. So we're, I'm trying to get something done and manage those discussions.
Chris, I understand exactly what you're saying. You presented us with a map, these streets color-coded, nice little legends and these are city funds, these are CDBG, these are Xyz's, a lot of stuff. It was about as simple as it can get, as far as I'm concerned. I understand that some of those funds are considered future, but they're still, they're going by their title.
They're not, so, they're not CDBG, those are, those are the PA dollars for eligibility, so those aren't, may not come our way. But if you guys want me...
Okay, let me clearly clarify my statement. I thought it was clear.
Okay, sir.
It wasn't apparently. Point I'm making is you have color codes, you have a legend, one of them says it's public funds, something like that.
Correct, correct.
And you have identification that the others are basically federal funds in some form or fashion, whether it's state or whatever. Bottom line, the additional dollars are not in hand, correct? This is really easy to...
Correct, correct.
Okay. Point I'm making is, as, as Wally is asking, in this situation, desilting addition culprit, you're asking to put the map as a link, as a embed, whatever, in here. People can look at that and they can be explained or figured out on their own that basically the public funds ones are being in action right now, which they are.
And the local ones are.
Local, public, whatever, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Everything else is not cash in hand yet.
And may never be, and so...
Everything else is not cash in hand right now.
Correct, correct.
Okay, that is going to be a work in progress.
Right.
Okay. So currently... Okay. So, currently you and Greg, four and six, providing for details relating to the holding of such election, providing for the incorporation of prenuptial and an effective date. Motion by Councilman Wilson to approve, second by Councilman Decker. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item twelve, consideration possible action concerning an ordinance of the City of Dickinson, Texas, ordering a special election to be held on May fourth, two thousand nineteen for the purpose of submitting to qualified voters of the city a proposition relating to the reauthorization of local sales and use tax in the City of Dickinson at the rate of one-fourth of one percent to continue providing revenue for maintenance and repair of municipal streets, designating one election precinct within the city, designating one polling place, providing the appointment of a presiding election judge and alternate presiding elected judge, establishing other procedures for the conducting of the election and providing an effective date. Motion by Councilman Keen to approve?
Second.
Second by Councilman. Decker? By Decker? Any discussion?
This is on, this is on the same ballot, right?
Yes. Yes. All in favor, do I say all in favor yet?
Can you guys, if that's on, I mean, there's only one ballot, right?
Right.
Right, one ballot, just a separate proposition on the...
That's what I was going to say.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Item thirteen, consideration possible action concerning resolution of the city council of the City of Dickinson, Texas, authorizing and approving the purchase of five new public safety vehicles for the Dickinson Police Department from Lake Country Chevrolet through HGAC five, corporate contract number F, no, V as a Victor, E-one-one-dash-one-eight, in an amount not to exceed one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty dollars, and authorizing and approving the purchase of radios and emergency equipment in an amount not to exceed nineteen-thousand three-hundred-and-four dollars per vehicle.
Move to approve for?
Motion by Councilman Seigerman to approve, second by Councilman Decker. Discussion?
Yes, I have one question.
Councilman Henderson?
Yes, ma'am. Did we or did we not discuss the vehicle replacement program when we did the budget? What I'm ultimately trying to figure, I thought we had already approved the purchase of vehicles based on the vehicle replacement program. So, my question is, why exactly are we voting on this?
The money.
I think we just voted for the budget, with the budget.
Right. I approved it now.
Right. Do you have to approve it another time? Have we done it before?
Yes.
Yes, because I, I thought I remembered that the police packages were five-thousand dollars per vehicle. So, seeing nineteen thousand is something new in that? I mean, is it always that high?
Why is that again?
The, I always call them police packages for what they have to add to the car, the lights.
The woo-woo stuff.
Yeah. I've been sworn it used to be five-thousand per vehicle.
Probably, ten years ago.
How it happened to be?
No, it's, it's, it's gone up, up, up every year, it's, yeah.
I've got a question. When we sell those vehicles, do we leave all the woo-woo stuff on?
No, I'm sorry, no, no, in fact, the chief's class just got out of, they went so far as to tell us we have to remove the spotlights as well. We have to leave the spotlights, we have to take everything, including strip spotlights.
So, what do we do with this?
Well, we, we're storing it a lot of it.
Do we get rid of? Frank?
We auction some, we recycle, we recycle what we can, they'll fit it into the car.
Rest of spare parts?
Recycle, it's for cars.
We recycle a lot of them.
Option.
Yeah, if, if, if the vehicles that we're going to maybe replace, if we can use that equipment, any equipment we can use, it's still our own, but we'll use it in those two vehicles. But if they change body styles or the vehicle changes, sometimes that equipment won't move over to the vehicles.
Also, it's been five years since we've recently, these vehicles, now five years old?
Yes.
And washing on this?
Oh, yeah. The only thing we've had to do to the Chevrolet Tahoes is replace the phone and the driver's seat and the seatbelts brand new. Replace phone and had a reopposed, had the door panels replaced twice. Other than that, nothing, the door panels, you know?
Yes, sir. They fix that phone and the door panels?
Think they have, they've redesigned, yeah, and not people complained that, yeah.
And chief, could you speak to the HGAC buy concerning using this program versus going to a local vendor?
Well, there's, there's been some issues since we first, Captain Jekker's going to come up, he probably, he has been through the wringer on this. We had decided because back in May of last year, we started looking at these things, we could actually purchase the Explorer and completely outfit it cheaper than we can buy the basic Tahoe. The Explorer, as you're aware of, they had some issues with the Explorers, have worked those issues out, and have a good vehicle now. So, when we came to the council with these vehicles, it looked good for us. Well, Ford, I don't know if it secretly, it wasn't well-known that they're, they shut down production of those... Twenty-nineteen vehicles. And they went so far back, because the folks that had those vehicles ordered, I think in September, October of last year, sent them letters saying, we're not going to be able to fulfill your order. So, that put us in a hurt of replacing those vehicles. And so, now we have some Tahoes that are sitting on a lot that are nineteen or eighteen? Nineteens, that are ready to get. There is no Explorers out there for us. It won't be until the summer.
Ford, Ford is starting production of twenty-twenty. Rebuilding. So, there are no Ford police vehicles available until the twenty-twenty model comes out, which those aren't even expected to be delivered to people who, agencies that have place holders as far back as August, they're not going to be here at least until this August or later. So, it made us pivot away from the Fords that we won't be able to get to the Tahoes, which they already have, you know, online around. So, we went through several different co-op purchasing programs, and HGAC had the best price for the vehicles.
HGAC had what now?
HGAC had the best competitive price between them, the taxi controller, and live board, so three different vendors. And then the amount to the emergency equipment, that's just what was originally estimated in the entire program, the vehicle, vehicle replacement program. All I did was basically what was originally estimated for computers, for cameras, for all the additional equipment, including my, in addition to just lights. It's not going to be that much, because we are going to salvage a lot of the lights and then transfer over. That number just reflects what was originally authorized in the budget.
And the fifth car, because normally we budget for four, we usually replace four at a time.
It's usually, we, we do it in an assessment of fleet and whichever ones meet the criteria that you all established in the five year. This, the fifth vehicle is actually, I believe, twelve years old, so we don't strictly go by the five-year standards. If some of them have been a take-home vehicle, they may last longer or until it becomes a maintenance issue. So, that particular car's been in the fleet since two thousand eight, I believe.
Are these all patrol, for patrol?
Four of the five, I believe. The other one is, like I said, two thousand eight, it's got a hundred and forty-seven thousand miles on it.
It's not patrol, does it need that police package?
No, it's, it's going to have, it's actually, it's going to be the emergency vehicle, emergency minute, and these live radios that are going to go in there, and that's, he already has that through different federal brands and whatnot. It's going to have the leftover lights from the four other police posts. There's additional lights that are transferring over that will make that...
So, you don't need the whole?
The inside supervision light is coming off of one of the existing cars that we drove last year that's been converted to a police car. So, we're being physical as possible as we can, we don't put the phone. So, we won't come close to that number, that forty-five-thousand number that's estimated for that vehicle. It'll be the price of the Tahoe, and I haven't got the quotes back for the installs, but it shouldn't be one and a couple thousand dollars for the de-install and reinstall of our existing equipment in this car. And we're cannibalizing, you know, the boxes out of the cars, a lot of the lights are transferring over. There's just certain things that don't transfer from Tahoe to Tahoe, like the back cage, the backseat, the partitions, a lot of those things, when they did a body style change, those won't transition over. So, that's what that estimate for the equipment includes. It didn't have cameras and computers and additional things, was the cameras that were built into the budget prep from last year, but that's been pulled from this packet and is put into the next agenda item for the entire fleet.
And just FYI, I understand the retooling of the Fords, where we're able to get into them, cheaper than we're able to get into a Tahoe. The Ford's doing kind of what GM did to us many years ago, lowered the price because the Tahoe's got everybody in them, and it skyrocketed.
The vendors I've heard talk to have already said that.
Ford's already told us we're going to the rear-wheel drive Explorer, and the prices.
The Fords are anticipating, the twenty-twenty Fords are anticipated to be more than the standard price now for the Nissan Tahoe. So, they're retooling, rebuilding, and they're going to outprice the Tahoe, which everyone's moving away from because they wrote the price to buy it.
So, you're saying we're sticking with Tahoes?
We're sticking with Tahoes. This is the council group.
For now.
For now. Yeah, we won't be seeing when that's, when they first sells, what they come up with.
And we, like I said, we do the assessment every year to determine what maintenance needs and whatnot that we have. And there are some, we're learning that the Tahoes are good for about four, and that fifth year is, we're starting, you know, like you already mentioned, and there's some transmission issues that are coming up, so that may be...